It's seven o'clock, so I'm going to convene the public hearing on the town of East Windsor, Broadbrook Fire Department 2122 budget recommendation. And before we get very far at all, I want to explain a little bit about the process here. So as everybody knows, this is our first year trying to admin. The parameters outlined in ordinance 20-1, which establishes the the Broadbrook Fire Department as the Town Fire Department and outlines of in a totally different way of doing their budget process from past practice. So in consultation with Chief R. Carey today, he pointed out something that I wanted to share with the group and which is why I'm saying this is going to be a little bit of a change of plans. So if you are reading the ordinance, it says that the Board of Selectmen shall review the fire department budget prepared by the board, being the Board of Fire Commissioners, and after consultation with the Board of Fire Commissioners, may revise the fire department budget. On or before March 15th of each year, the Board of Selectmen shall conduct at least one public hearing on the proposed fire department budget. So the way I interpret that and Chief R. Carey is the one who raised this as a question, and I think he's right. The first step in the process is actually the consultation with between the Boards of Selectmen and Fire Commissioners. So that that will happen later this evening. After we have met with them and the Board of Selectmen make any recommend make any recommended changes to the fire commission's budget, at that point, we hold a public hearing on their budget. That's how the verbiage in the ordinance seems to be written. So as we're trying to to feel our way through the process this year, that that is somewhat different from the way we do other things. Or at least we have in the past, but if you think about the process that's been used since the charter was changed this year, the first selectman submits his budget for a public hearing to the Board of Selectmen before and before the Board of Selectmen can affect that, they need to have a public hearing on it. The same thing happens with the the Board of Education and the superintendent's budget. So there really, we have what was submitted to us by the Board of Fire Commissioners for their budget, but the ordinance doesn't require a public hearing at this point in town, at this point in time. It does require one before the Board of Selectmen send a budget to the Board of Finance. So at Chief R. Carey's request, I think we're going to try and honor the the specific terms of the ordinance this evening, which is to say, we won't have a public hearing tonight. We will have their presentation and then we'll have to schedule and notice a public hearing on the Board of Selectmen's recommended changes to the fire commission's budget. Does that seem clear? Yeah, I'm seeing heads nod from those folks who have cameras on. So I'm going to leave the room open and the recording going, I'm going to pause the recording. But at this point in time, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn the the public hearing. And will it'll be rescheduled for a date after the selectmen have consulted with the Board of Fire Commissioners as per the ordinance. Could I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
There are Muska Selectmen, I'll move to adjourn the public hearing.
Is there a second?
We'll second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded, it's non-debatable. Selectmen Ordell. Selectmen Muska.
Aye.
Selectmen D'Souza.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to convene the budget workshop at 7:30 and we'll lead off with the town of East Windsor, Broadbrook Fire Department. And then we'll go into our our batting order as prescribed in the in the stated agenda. Any questions? Good opportunity to go grab dinner or maybe finish a Panera. It's 7:31, so we'll convene the Board of Selectmen's Budget Workshop. On tonight's agenda, we have the town of East Windsor, Broadbrook Fire Department, the which is being presented by the Broadbrook Fire Commissioners. We have the Cemetery Association, the Veterans Commission, the Registrars of Voters, the Broadbrook Library and the Warehouse Point Library. So it's a full plate this evening. Who is speaking on behalf of the Broadbrook Fire Department?
Hi, John Madigan.
Hello, Commissioner, how are you?
I'm well, how is everyone else this evening?
Good, thank you.
Good. Are you ready for me to start?
Yes, sir, do you need to share your? Are you all set?
All right, we have spent numerous hours working with the Broadbrook Fire Department operating budget that's going to be appropriate for our for our new situation here. As most people are aware, we are going to be a separate line item. We had to be very careful that we prepare the budget that is appropriate for the year for us because we have to make sure that we don't run short on anything. We do have, we have presented, the budget was presented to us, the commissioners, and it was accepted by us, and we're now presenting it to the town of East Windsor in your group. I'd like to, I'm going to turn this over to the Chief of the Department, Chief R. Carey, who is going to go through the items by items and we can ask questions at any time.
Good evening, everyone. Let me start out with, write down a list. First line would be the part-time salary. Part-time salary has gone up $162,000 last year, which 16,000 of it was cut, we were cut short last year when the budget was approved. Right now, we're a little under, we're under for this year's budget. What we've done was, we wanted to go to a seven night a week, two men from 10 to six. And then we were going to add one more person during the day, so four man crew during the day. And a nine-hour workday during the week. And it was also a dollar hour raise, it was $19 an hour. Wanted to go to the four man crew because during the day, there isn't a lot of guys around and that first engine can get out of this firehouse without waiting for anybody else to come down. Or if it's a medical call, two guys can go into medical call, two guys can still stay here, so if something else comes in, you start two, two guys hanging around as opposed to just one of the guys hanging around. The night staff, we want to go seven nights a week because 15 years ago, a lot of, most of you, most of my, half mile radius. Right now, I probably have three guys, four guys that live within a half mile radius in the firehouse. The rest of my guys live better than a mile to two miles, and somebody could be three miles away from the firehouse. So two o'clock in the morning, whether it be a motor vehicle accident, whether it be a fire alarm, whether it be a fire medical call. You can even think of your own self, getting on a bit at two o'clock in the morning, you got to get dressed, you got to go out this time, you got to scrape your windshield, you got to drive your car down here, you got to get out of your car, get dressed in the firehouse with your gear and take off. So that takes 10 minutes, sometimes 12 minutes. If you have two guys here, especially like a medical call, they're out the door already. And the ambulance is coming from the other side of town, which takes them 10, 12, 15 minutes to get over here. And then, as opposed to waiting for the five man crew to show up, you got two guys already to start with, you wait for three. That's where our increase there is. The next line is the 27th payroll, that was never in our budget before. And the way it was explained to me was, the way the town does a bi-weekly payroll that there's an extra, this year happens to be an extra two weeks in the payroll. Next year, it should be an extra two days. So right now, we're at the highest cycle for the extra payroll. In the years past, the town has just put that in there, they've taken care of it. The next line down is the fire marshal stipend, which we've never had.
Can I, Chief R. Carey, I'm sorry, can I just inject something that I should have done at the outset pertaining to your request? And this is something that that we have discussed in commission meetings and offline and that I addressed in my budget presentation and with the members of the board. But we are still budgeting for, in in what I submitted to the town clerk's office in January, we're still budgeting for the anticipated costs of the Broadbrook Fire Department as is, but that will be coming out of the budget before the Board of Selectmen makes its recommendation onto the Board of Finance. And Chief, you and your team have worked with Amy and I in identifying what those expenses were so that we know what the what will be taken out. That includes things like the 27th payroll and the fire marshal stipend and so on and so forth. So I neglected to mention that at the outset of things, but I just wanted to make it clear that that was what our intention was, to show the voters that we are, we are working in tandem with the fire department so as to remove the funding from the general fund. So I'm sorry to interrupt, sir, but I just wanted to make sure that I I was on record with that.
Okay, thank you. The fire marshal stipend is $25,000, like I said, it was never in our budget before. The next line down is the incentive, it went up 5,000. Right now, we're at 60%, 50% of our incentive use. What happens with the incentive now, why it's gone up so much is because we use the volunteers, they work here during the day, they work here at night. By state law, if they come back after hours, we have to pay them their regular rate. Normal volunteer gets $12 a call. We have several members that work nights and they work days that they have to get their regular pay by paying during the day at night. So that's why we've had to go up with that $5,000. That takes care of the salaries. The next line down is the FICA and FICA, which we've never been in our budget before, which is $3,2400. As you can see, the annuity went down 10,000. We, this will be the first year that the annuity has broken even. We're above boards and that took us a lot of years to get above boards with it. Workman's comp is 12,000, that was never in our budget before. The professional services was 10,000 last year, went down to $3,800. And the reason for that is, is because if you go down a couple lines, there's a phone line. And the way the new line items are going to be, we had to break out the phone separately. And the phone went up because of the new internet speeds. We have a very, we have a very slow internet fire station, so we wanted to update it to today's standards and that was the extra money, it's an extra $2,000 for the for the year. Physicals, we have $1,000 because the physicals every year go up a little more and a little Next line down is the fire marshal's phone. We have to pay for the, we have to pay, we haven't discussed with the district yet, but the dis, the fire marshal would like to have one phone as opposed to having a Broadbrook phone in the district hall. So we were hoping that this, we could split the district's phone bill with them. So the fire marshal, we just have one phone, one phone number. Vehicle maintenance is 52,000, went down to 45,000 because if you look down the line further, there's a gas and diesel line which we didn't have before, there was $6,000 added in that out of the 52,000. Next one down is town dispatch. There again, the, that was always in the selectmen's budget, we never had anything to do with that. The next line down is lap insurance. We had VFIS for the past, I'm going to say 30 years, but we got a better deal through a different insurance company now, with a little bit better coverage and there, they went down $3,000, that's why that's a big decrease. The next line down is a travel expense, that's a fire marshal expense. Because the town right now pays a mileage and we're going to keep the same thing going. The next one down is supplies, and the supplies is your, is bunker gears, radios, Scott packs, medical supplies, all kinds of various things. And the reason it went up was because we asked for $90,000 last year from CIP to replace bunker gear. And the bunker gear is a life expectancy of 10 years per NFPA standards. So we got $30,000 last year from CIP, which left the $60,000 short. But now, since that we are our own budget line item, we plan on putting $25,000 every year in the budget until we caught up with our bunker gear. So that's why that number's there. The next line is fire marshal supplies, that's, again, just for the fire marshal, that was never in our budget before. The gas and diesel, like I said, commodity, vehicle maintenance, dues and fees, 170 dollars, minor, that's the minor increase. And then the last line is our CIP allocation. As you all know, we're not going to be part of the CIP anymore because we're on our own. So we want to put $200,000 in there every year and over time, over five or 10 years, it will go up a little bit. But we are figuring, if you put $200,000 in every year, we can replace our trucks and it won't be this big, you know, we need a million dollars in five years, and then another five years, we need another million dollars. If we put $200,000 in every year, there's always going to be money in there, we can lease trucks, we can buy out, buy out truck, you know, right out, right by them. That's our thoughts on that, which the whole budget came up to 957,327, which is considerably more than last year's. But if you look at all the stuff that was ever.
Ellis Roberts.
That's why it's such an increase. Anybody have any questions?
Just to clarify, there was 11, there's 11 individual line items that were assumed by going through this method for a total increase in in the line items that were assumed by the budget of 323,201. So it just does represent a significant portion assumed over to this method of how we're going to fund.
So this is Jason. What we typically do our budget workshops is I invite members of the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Finance to ask any questions of the presenting agency or department. The workshops by their definition are a little bit more casual and relaxed, so I'd ask if any member of the either the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Finance have any questions so far for Commissioners Madigan, Maxada and Chief R. Carey.
One, we did have, we had 768 runs last year.
2.104 calls per day on average.
Marie, Sarah, Charlie?
I've got one. I don't see, or maybe it's just hidden in with one of the other line items. Hose testing, ladder testing, where's that hidden?
That's under supplies and equipment, Charlie.
Okay.
It's specifically a line item for testing, ladder, hose, air compressor, amp kiss, flow testing, fire extinguishers, as well as mask bit and calibration.
Okay, great.
Marie?
Yeah, I'm not sure if this, um, questions or comments are going to be directed to you, Jason, as well as the Board of Missioners that are speaking tonight, but I have a couple issues. And looking at the budget that was proposed and looking at our next year budget historical comparisons, if you go in the first part, the 27th payroll and the ER, FICA ER, there's no way in looking at the budget on page 10 on that to tell what's been taken out, that's being thrown into the fire department budget. Because when you, when you look underneath the fire on the this report, the total amount is $467,000. But then all this other stuff that they've alluded that wasn't in their budget before, it's not apparent as how much was taken out when you're budgeted.
Okay, so I have.
And the reason why I'm asking that, Jason, is because when we made the agreement that we were going to take all the money associated with the fire department and we were going to do a budget and then allowed them that, right now, the difference is $490,000. And I know $200,000 is capital improvement, if that goes through, and the other is their additional staffing they want is the majority of it. But I just think that's a lot to swallow when you're looking at just the numbers for the first year of making this transition. And I'm just questioning whether or not the CIP is necessary this year to put in that large, large amount. And we know that some of the increases, we went with last year's budget in those allocations. I'd like to get the numbers so that it's palpable to the public, if you know what I mean.
So there were a couple of comments in there that that I'd like to address and then I'm going to ask Amy to add some color to, and then the Commissioners can defend their, the actual nuances of the budget. But all of the sheets that you see in your budget book present what was submitted to my office prior to my composition of the budget. So those, those are, the the book numbers are what the departments have requested. On this sheet, the Munis Run Sheet, which are there. Amy sent around new ones, and I point you to the last three columns on the right-hand side. One is the current year's actual expenditures by line. That's the CY actuals, CY revised budget is the current year's revised budget, which is our operating, that's actually what we're running the government on. And the projection level is the first selectman's budget. And the percentage change is linked between the current revised and the first selectman's projected. So using the 27th payroll as an example. You can see that the current year's revised budget, the one we're currently operating under, is a budget of $156,000.
Right.
Next year, in my proposed budget, is $150,528. But if.
I, I have the updated version then.
It was sent around, Amy, did you send this around earlier this afternoon?
I didn't get it.
No, but I didn't make any changes. This is the one that I sent to everybody after our first budget hearing on the eighth.
Yeah.
The one I got, it was generated on February 9th. Anybody got an updated one?
That's the one.
That's the one, that is the current one.
Well, I'm looking at the current one now, the 27th payroll on page 10 of that report, and it has 156 and 156.
No, you're reading it wrong, it's 156 and 150, 528.
I don't have that on mine. Anybody got that? Yeah, you got something different than us.
I don't have that on mine either.
I don't either.
I don't either.
What are, what are they looking at, Amy?
I don't know what they're looking at.
Okay, go to page 10 of that report, Jason.
Yeah, I'm looking at.
Okay, go to page 10, if you go under 1005500.
I know, I know what the difference is, I know what the difference is. You guys are looking at one that was run in the morning at 11:39. The correct one was run at 2:20 in the afternoon.
Yeah, mine was run at 9:09. Okay, so that's why, that's why I had so many questions on this, because our, the information I was working with is not correct.
I'm not sure how material that is to the current budgets discussion, but it's certainly something that we can recirculate with the updated one from, well, we brought it as of tomorrow, for that matter.
Well, because I'm trying to figure, I'm trying to figure out, out of that 27th payroll, for example, they've allocated $11,096. I'm assuming that was taken out of that line.
No, it wasn't. Only $5,472 was taken out of that line. So they've increased their numbers to match their new numbers that they're asking for. So I can give you a list of all the accounts that got changed and what they were. That might be a good place to start.
Well, I think the place is, we've, we've said to the public that we were going to take all the expenses for the Broadbrook Fire Department, and we were going to put them all together and then take that money and transfer it all over to the fire department after the budget has been approved before we submit it to the Board of Finance. But I don't, I don't know how to come up to that number to to do it properly.
Okay, so that, that is correct, but it's not their new numbers that they're asking for, it's the numbers that are currently in the budget in '21. So for the Broadbrook Fire section, it's 467. For the fire marshal, it's 20,280.
467, 20,280.
That's fire marshal.
Yep.
Communications is 22,000.
Yep.
Employee benefits for 27th payroll is 5,472.
Yep.
The FICA is 20,349.
Yep.
And the workers' comp is 12,000. The total of that is 547,101. That's what is coming out of the Board of Selectmen budget.
Okay. All right, that makes sense.
So they've adjusted their numbers, like FICA and their 27th payroll based on their ask of the additional funds.
Okay, but I just, I got the number I need now, 547,101 is coming out, so that that down, and that's closer to the two, the 162 for the added. I just wanted to be able to explain it one at, okay. Could you just send us a hard copy of that, those figures?
Sure.
All right, if you don't mind. And, and those amounts were all backed out of this document, right?
They are still in there as of right now. So Jay's, so Jay's 3.89% increase.
Yep.
Is with fire flat, fire marshal flat.
Okay.
Call and dispatch flat.
Yep.
So that when we pull them out and we go to no increase, we haven't reabsorbed those numbers somewhere else.
Okay, so that .57, is that what it is?
Yes.
After, that's accurate then.
Right.
Yeah.
It's 389 with funding for the Broadbrook Fire Department included, it's .57 without funding for the fire department included.
Okay. I'm sorry, Jason, but I did need you to understand where the numbers were coming from.
Yeah, this is going to be a learning curve year, but.
But if we can get a new one of those historical comparisons, that'll be good. And I know it's going to change because every month it's going to change or every time there's a change, it's going to change, but.
Every day it changes, the current is current to the day.
Okay.
Other questions or comments on the presentation from the Commissioners, Sarah?
Sarah Muska Selectmen, are there any COVID-related expenses in your budget as far as masks and supplies or anything of that nature?
Not many, no.
No, it wasn't.
Okay, and fire marshals, let me see, fire marshal supplies, is that software? Or what are some examples of the supplies the fire marshal needs?
Could be software, it could be his NFPA books, it could be camera, camera, anything he needs to, to do his, do his job.
Okay, so are any of the items he's using, I know since we have the current fire marshal serving Warehouse Point and Broadbrook, are there anything, is there anything we can do that he is sharing amongst the departments? Or are we funding software here and items here, and then he has the same items he's using over at Warehouse Point?
We're working with, we're going to be working with the district on that, but a lot of stuff, reasons for, it's probably would should be a lot more than that, but we are going to be sharing things with Warehouse Point, we hope. We hope to anyways.
Thank you.
Lance, sir?
Yeah, I just want to understand the first line item again, the part-time salary increase of 162,000. That is adding an additional part-time day staff and five additional night staff to a total of seven, that's the total number of folks being added?
But no, it's what it is, is right now, I have two guys on Friday nights and Saturday nights to start with. I want to increase to seven nights a week, two firemen for eight hours. Okay. And during the day, we're going to increase it by one. That number, if you look at the original number, $130,000, we're 160,000 shortfall this year. Because when they, when they did the budget last year, they didn't, they didn't, it didn't come up with it. When they did our budget for the paid staff, they just went off the year before and it wasn't a true number because we had added the night staff the year before and it didn't start until the second until September. So there's going to be a $16,000 shortfall, I'm going to have to come back and either, I don't know what we're going to do.
Okay, I'm wondering.
Jason, we've talked about that already.
Yeah, I'm wondering if, when you presented to the Board of Finance, if you could just make that extra detail to explain that, that would be great, thanks.
We can do that, it's easy.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Noreen, did you have anything for the Commissioners?
Yeah, I did, Jason. I'm just got a little confused with the reports kind of to what Marie was talking about. From the Commissioners, including what you want for capital improvement, what's your bottom line number?
Well, I put in for, I put in for capital improvements for the past several, several years of $200,000, $250,000 and every year it gets cut out. The truck is getting old, it's 20 years old. It's going to take us three, if we get this year, it's going to be at least another three years until we get the truck out. So that's why we need 2,000, 2 million before we're said and done.
To answer, I think the question was, what's the bottom line budget number is 957,27 was the number, which, you know, depending on what the assessments come in at, those were an average cost of less than $5 person per for fire protection services. And this is, you know, my, my opinion on this is that as we're establishing this as an entity in a new way going to establish the right base logic that's going to set the department and the, the fire protection services that this town enjoys up for sustained success, and that this budget does that.
Okay, and then for the.
Okay, and then for the truck that you were just talking about, you're thinking three years from now? For a new truck?
Wouldn't be. You don't, you don't want to finance a whole million dollars truck. That would be, that would be ridiculous. So if you could put it in for two years, it was gonna take the committee another six or eight months to get the truck ready to go. By the time you send it out to bid and everything else, it'll be seven or eight months from now. Um, then it takes another 14 months to build a truck.
Okay.
But on an annual life cycle, this gets us into a five-year average replacement cycle on the engines, which is appropriate and what's needed based on, on how long they've been in service.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the Fire Commissioners or for the, the Fire Chief? Well, as I said, at the outset of the public hearing on this, this is our first time going through the um, the, the ordinance process that, that was adopted in the fall. Um, I want to start by thanking the Commissioners and the Fire Department for their um, help and support along the way. Um, we're gonna try very hard to make sure that we get the process right, uh, but there are some things that we're gonna learn along the way too, so. Um, I appreciate their cooperation, their collaboration, uh, and everyone's patience as we get this figured out. So if there's nothing else for the Broadbrook Fire Commissioners, we will move on to the Cemetery Association. Mr. Ryback?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, guys. Mr. Ryback, how are you?
Good evening, I'm doing fine, yourself?
Good to see you.
Thanks. So the, the budget that we put together this year, um, it, it's uh, it's requesting to answer the last question from the previous group, uh, $25,000. Um, that's a $10,000 increase over what we received last year, but it's only a $5,000 increase over the prior year. Um, we did sustain a cut pretty substantially last year and you know, we're, we're not in a cycle like, like the Fire Department where we accrue money to um, you know, fix roads and things of that nature. This budget is really stripped down in, in order to provide really the basic needs for the, the cemetery, which is lawn care, you know, mowing of the grass, um, snow plowing of the roads that we do have, some basic tree work for safety concerns um, and some minor repairs to, to pavements and fences. Um, we know that that pavement repair number is, is extremely small and, and the time is coming, you know, quickly here where those roads are gonna need something much larger. Um, but you know, it's our hope in the future that we can maybe discuss some, some way to better, better deal with those things. And I'm open to ideas if you guys have any on how to do that.
Any questions, comments for Mr. Ryback?
Jason, did we get a copy of their um, paperwork? Because I couldn't find it in the budget book and it's not listed on the end.
It's in activities and fees and it's the, I think it's the second uh, supporting document back in the activities and fees, which is in tab two. They have an income and an expense statement, um, and they also break down their restricted funds.
Yeah, I've gone through several iterations of this since, since I've been the treasurer and, and um, you know, if you guys want to see more or less detail, please let me know. I have, I have stripped it down a little bit because it was referred to as an I chart previously, so I'm trying to just give the basic information. You know, you guys are busy and um, give you, give you the necessary facts and not, not crowd up the sheet, but happy to answer any questions.
What are you guys' revenues? Did you submit that? I'm, I'm looking at that activity sheet, Jay, um, in that subsection report here and it just says management, maintenance of town cemeteries. Am I missing something else?
Murray, it's two pages after that, there's a whole sheet.
One, two pages after that.
Three technically.
I only put page two and then I go to, then I go to Connecticut conferences.
It's after CCM.
Okay. Okay, I got it. My, my fault, apologize.
It's around 50,000.
Yep, okay, I got what I needed. Thank you.
Yeah. Bob, your, your revenues are around 50,000?
Uh, well, that's what we refer to as income. That's a combination of, of what we receive from you folks, um, our stock and bond income and then the money that we make, um, performing burials within the town cemeteries and we also handle the burials at St. Catherine Cemetery, even though we don't do any of the maintenance there, they take care of their own.
Can you, uh, we talked about this a bit when, when you and Dan came and visited with me a month or so ago. Um, can you talk a little bit about the um, restricted funds and actually what the restrictions are and why that matters?
Yeah, sure. So the restricted funds that um, the first line there is called perpetual care into income, which is what people would commonly refer to as buying a plot. So you don't actually buy the, buy the land, you just buy the, the right to have the the land above you taken care of in perpetuity forever. And according to uh, the documents that establish our association, which is also congruent with um, the state's guidance for cemetery associations, those funds have to be put into a perpetual care fund for which we're not allowed to touch the principal. And I know we had some conversation uh, when we met with you and I did, I did come up with that number and you know, we have about, about a million dollars um, invested in our fund and you know, depending on where the, how the market fluctuates, you know, 65 to 70% of that is that perpetual care funds from selling perpetual care plots in the cemetery. So we can't touch a single dollar of that. We can only take the income off of that. And um, you know, the way we structure our portfolio is pretty um, pretty conservative because it has to, it has to uh, last forever essentially, so we do have some funds off of that that we can um, use for projects here and there, but essentially we know that there's bigger projects that are coming down the road and if we drain that down to only the bare minimum, then we'll only be allowed to use the, the income off of those restricted funds. You know, the other funds that are in there are um, from a trust that was established and the cemetery is one of the benefactors of that. So the, the Morton Trust, which if you're familiar with the Windsorville Cemetery, the, the large um, you know, Virgin Mary monument in bronze there, um, that's Mr., Mr. Morton's series of plots and he left money in trust and we've received money specifically for the care of only the Windsorville Cemetery. So we have to break out our expenses and report that back to Bank of America, who's the um, trustee for that, you know, that fund. So we, we allocate some of the uh, maintenance specifically to that cemetery and then report that back as the use of their funds.
Thank you. I, I ask you to dig a bit deeper into that because I know that, that there has been confusion over that for a number of years and I thought having that explanation would be helpful moving forward that, you know, the money is there, but it is truly restricted is, is a thing for us to remember. Any questions or comments for Mr. Ryback? Marie?
Yeah, I don't know if um, be aware, but at one time, uh, the Cemetery Association had mortgages out, um, and will get income, income from those. I don't see any of that listed. Are those no longer?
No, so when I took over, I think it's maybe five years ago as treasurer, um, we didn't have any of those in existence. Most of our funds were actually in the bank and they were earning virtually nothing. We had a few um, bonds, you know, Build America type bonds and things of that nature. And since then, you know, we worked with um, some folks at Morgan Stanley, developed an investment policy statement and um, created, you know, two separate portfolios. So one is strictly for the perpetual care funds and that's invested in stocks and bonds. Um, and it's designed to, to grow so that any uh, growth that comes off of that, um, we are allowed to take that and then we put that in a separate fund, um, which is invested separately. And usually that's where we draw our money off of, or if we have a large project that we're looking to do, we can dip into that bucket of funds because it's not um, part of that restricted part. It's part of the income that's come off of there. But all of it's done, you know, with a professional money manager now. There's no, no more.
So that money that's there is not anywhere on this document that was submitted. That's a separate fund?
Um, it's represented under um, stock and bond income.
Stock and bond income.
Right, so that's, yeah, that's the income that we're taking off of, off of the um, bond investments that we have and you know, interest rates, as a lot of you know, if you've refinanced your home are lower and lower these days, so that becomes harder and harder to come by.
So how much do you have in that account now? If you don't mind, do you roughly, doesn't have to be exact.
So all in, it's around a million dollars between the restrict, restricted portion of perpetual care funds and then any of the earnings that we've generated off of that.
Okay. I just want, when I look at this, I was in shock. I'm saying what happened to all the money that they had? You just, you just explained it. Um, and then you take percentage every year off to do what you need to do to stay above it. Okay, thanks for the explanation.
Yep, you're welcome.
Charlie?
Selectman Nordele, of approximately how many cemeteries are we maintaining at this point?
Uh, six.
Six?
Yep. So you have um, Windsorville, Melrose, Scantic, uh, Springdale, uh, Town Street and North Cemetery.
Okay, thanks.
Sarah, any questions?
I'm good, thank you.
How about uh, Tom? Tom's good. Nora, anything from you?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Bob, thanks for taking the time to join us and to explain. Much appreciated.
Have a good night, guys.
You too.
Thank you.
Next will be uh, the Veterans Commission. I think I saw Mr. Barton on. I do see Mr. Barton on. Good evening, sir. How are you?
Good evening, how are you?
Good, thank you. So the, is yours?
So our, our budget is uh, is the same as it was last year and for several years, um, very simply, uh, it's $1,200 for Recording Secretary, which is $100 a month for each of the uh, of our meetings, our monthly meetings. And quite often we, we don't have, we don't hold all of those meetings every year and, and some of that money uh, may come back. And the, the other section of our budget has to do with uh, community events, I think, I'm not sure. I'm not sure really how that's categorized. That's uh, our part of that is basically the cemetery flags and typically we spend about uh, 900 and something, almost a thousand, uh, $1,000 on uh, on cemetery flags. So those are our two items.
That's um, under activities and fees, that's the Memorial Day um, line item, it's a, a thousand dollars. And then their, their Veterans Commission Recording Secretary expenses is separate.
Right.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Barton? I'm seeing a lot of shaking heads and the negative. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Barton? All right, Jim, thank you very much for taking the time to join us. We'll talk with you soon.
Thank you.
Registarians of voters, I saw, there, there, I see Karen and Angelo.
Good evening. Um, first, we have revised our budget, so I don't know what's in your budget books, but our budget.
Initially submitted.
All right, so our budget is, was revised on February 2nd after our meeting with the, the first selectmen. And I'll take you through any differences that, that may exist. Um, you should show a dollar amount for fiscal 2122 of 31,656 on the register of voters. That is the uh, per diems and, and the
Stipends.
Stipends, if you want to call it that, um, which is about, which is a 2% increase over last year. The, the next two entries should reflect a um, election officer workers, office workers of 24,000 and food of 1,800. Um, this is the biggest increase in our budget. It has to do with um, I could ask you to turn to page four, which in our presentation, which, which is entitled per diem rates, positions, number, frequency for the fiscal year. These are all the different types of staff that we have to have depending on whether we're dealing with an election, a primary or a referendum and have been significantly increased as a result of COVID and our need to uh, have contact tracing done and also to provide for clean and safe work conditions, not only for the poll workers, but for the public. It may reflect a increase of approximately 20, uh, $5,000, um, which is also reflective of what we are budgeting for, which is a town meeting regarding the fire taxes, the three referendums that we normally have to budget for and a primary and an election uh, in state and municipal. That's where the bulk of our increase over last year came. And uh, there's not a lot we can do about the positions since the Secretary of State uh, in effect mandates that we have most of these. The other line items have pretty much stayed the same, although our education and dues has been reduced uh, entirely as a result of Karen's excellent uh, ability to uh, register for courses in a not-so-easy fashion. Um, and she's required to complete her her courses uh, for the end of this year. The other fees there, uh, as far as machines, printing and media cards, basically static and a recurring expenses every year. Uh, we can never um, know exactly what our media cards are gonna cost us because it's a function how many candidates are on those uh, ballots and uh, maybe how many um, referendum questions we have. So while we're looking at a 6.01% increase, I would say they are entirely as a result of mandated extra staff that we have to hire and um, I don't see that changing uh, for this fiscal year. Be glad to answer any questions and Karen would be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for the registrars?
Tom? Uh, yeah, could I just have um, Angelo the new uh, total under FY 2122? Cause.
71,436.
71,436, thank you.
You're welcome. One last item. We, we have asked for a capital expenditure to purchase a new fireproof cabinet for our voting cards. The existing cabinet that we have is at its maximum capacity. Um, it's very, very difficult to uh, be able to file in there because of the the need to compress all the cars that we have in a fire safe uh, unit that we have right now. So we went out and asked some of the other registers in the other towns. Uh, and we've gotten costs of anywhere from 8,000 to 10,000 dollars for one of those cabinets because of the fireproofing um, necessity. It, it's not in our budget. Uh, but we are looking to see if we can find a used one or a new one and we believe that capital expenditure would um, give us enough money to do so. Karen, you want to have? Karen, you want to have anything else to add?
I just wanted to add that, um. If there's any leftover shelving around right now, we're required to keep our last two elections for twenty-two months. And they're pretty much spread all over the floor and if there's any leftover shelving from renovations, we could certainly use it. Um, to put in the annex to, to put the bags and boxes of what we have to keep for almost two years. And the other thing that I wanted to just say about the election and the office workers is we have. Tried to bring them up as close as possible to a minimum wage. Um, we've, there is an increase in workers, but we've also tried to. Bring them up from eleven dollars an hour, which is a, not a lot of money when they're working sixteen and seventeen dollars. A day for an election. Um. As far as my certification, Angelo covered that, um, I was supposed to be certified by January, but. Due to COVID, all the classes were canceled and they have just now instituted online classes. I registered four weeks ago and just today I got my link. To my fifth class, so I'll finish that one, I have three more plus my exam after that. And I guess that's really all I have to say.
Any other questions or comments for the registrars? Noreen?
No, I'm good, Jason, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to keep asking you because I can't see, so I'm just going to ask you on each one.
That's fine, thanks.
Um, Charlie, Sarah, Marie?
Well, I'm good.
And Tom, you're good. All right, thank you folks for joining us, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up is the Broadbrook Library, um, and this, I'm going to call on, I think. I think Paul is speaking for the library.
I'm here.
How are you, Paul?
Hey, I'm here, I figure that's a pretty good deal.
Uh, tab five. Okay, you want to walk us through what your request is?
Certainly. Okay, um. All right, our request this year is the same as our request from last year, our budget has increased substantially. Um, and part of that is the state's. Minimum wage increases during the year. Uh, I try to be fair about that, I don't want to comment too much on that, um. We have done, uh, fundraising, we started a fundraiser on Facebook and I believe we have a fundraiser coming out in the quarterly newsletter. Uh, for our capital expenses that we have coming up. So, uh, we don't see ourselves as asking for that money. From the town at this point, we're trying to get it externally. Uh, I believe, uh, well, if you, 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 I assume you have the budget request and, uh. The documentation I provided. Um. Things obviously because of the pandemic have been a little bit out of the ordinary. Uh, we're open very limited hours. However, uh, our clientele are adapting to it, so we are. We're, we're getting patronage, no question about that, uh, we're getting tremendous response on Facebook. We, uh. We have well over three hundred people following the library at the moment and we post. Uh, minimum twice a week, we have something to say. Our goal for the year when things can normalize would be to institute. Uh, event passes and, uh, specific programs. Uh, youth programs. Get back to our, our, uh, free card making days, a lot of things which we're not doing now because they're a group. Events and we don't have a method for pulling those off, we're still buying books. People are still looking for new books and we are providing them. Um. So, uh, our, our goal is to stay functional as we have for well over a hundred years. And provide the service to the Broadbrook area that some people totally rely on. Um, other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments for Paul? Marie, uh, did I see your hand go up?
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, um. How about Noreen?
No, I'm good, Jason, thanks.
Tom, Sarah, or Charlie?
None for me.
Sarah says no, Charlie says no, okay. Sweet, Paul, good job, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Have a good evening. Lois, how are you this evening?
Very good, thank you.
Will it be you or will it be Lee speaking on behalf of the library?
I'll be speaking, thank you, um, I'd like to share my screen, I have a PowerPoint.
Yep, you should be able to do so, let me know if you can't, but that should be.
Okay. Um. Okay, there we go.
Yep.
Um, this year we closed, uh, March fourteenth, of course, because of pandemic. And, uh, while we were closed, we were, um, working with our grants. And we also added considerable resources to the website, COVID resources, the links for those. Virtual tours of museums and so on, educational resources for families and other activities and. And exercises, we subscribe to an additional, uh, resource for families in tumble books. Which is, uh, books for preschool and elementary school children that they can either read online. Or, uh, have read to them online, so that's an activity for kids to be able to read at home. Online, uh, we offered curbside pickup starting June first, when we first went back and entered, I guess, phase one of the recovery. And then we opened, uh, with all the COVID restrictions starting July twentieth. We have just recently added Hoopla, which is a large database of over nine hundred thousand resources. Including videos, movies and TV shows, music, audiobooks, ebooks and comics. Um, during the winter and while we were closed. We got a PEGPetya technology grant from the state of Connecticut and that enabled us to update our technology. So we got eight new patron computers and three staff computers. We got an early learning station for preschool and elementary children with four thousand learning activities. And an after-school edge for elementary enrichment and school support. And this first picture is two kids at the library doing some of the activities there on one of the, uh, learning stations.